I'm calling Mr. Malamine to order fire exits are located in directions I am indicating. In case of fire, you will be notified in the following way, bell, horn, or public address system. If you are alerted to fire, please move in a calm orderly manner to the nearest smoke free exit or directed by the establishment over the public address system. Joel, please rise for our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting has been publicized in accordance with Section 5, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, open public meeting law by notification to each board member that has it, Library, Independent, Asbury Park Press, News Tribune, Courier-Style Ledger, Township Turk, and posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of Township Hall. Time may be allotted for public comment at this meeting. Each speaker may be allotted a limited time when recognized by the presiding officer. Individuals wishing to address the board shall be recognized by the presiding officer and shall give their name, address, and group, if any, that they represent. Although the Board encourages public participation, it reserves the right through its presiding officer to terminate remarks to and or by any individual not in keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. The Board will not during the public portion of this meeting discuss matters involving employment, appointment, termination of employment, negotiations, terms, and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance of promotion or disciplining of any specific or prospective or current employee. And a roll call, please. Mrs. Gacken?
Here.
Mr. Herman?
Here.
Mr. Nello?
Here.
Mr. Cullis?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mr. McGrath?
Here.
Mrs. Leary?
Here.
Mrs. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Willey?
Here.
And Mrs. Corrine?
Here.
Just so you know, in terms of the procedure this evening, we're going to go through presentations, followed by the budget presentation, the student member update, and then we will take a brief recess at that point. So that having been set up, turn the agenda over to our host for the evening, Mr. McCoy. Thank you. If you want to say anything.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Dr. Reagan, Dr. Roman, Mr. Willey, members of the Board of Education, thank you so much for visiting us this evening at Haslett Middle School. We're proud to celebrate the hard work of our students with you tonight. In the back of the room, you will see our mini art show. Under the direction of Mrs. Toll and Mr. White, the art students have prepared works all year long for display in the spring art show, which will be held on May 14th along with our spring chorus and band concert. Please feel free to take some time during tonight's break to view the art display, and we hope you'll be inspired to join us for the full show on May 14th. Tonight, we're going to speak to you just for a few moments about flipped classrooms. Technology integration is a key aspect of instruction at Haslett Middle School. You are aware that this year, all seventh grade students are taking pre-algebra, and one learning technique we found to support this heterogeneous grouping in pre-algebra is the flipped classroom approach. What is a flipped classroom? In a flipped classroom, students receive their direct instruction, or something similar to a lecture, via a video tutorial, often viewed at home. And then, in class time, is spent collaboratively. In class, the time can be spent on discussion, problem solving, individual coaching, small work instruction, breaking up into learning groups, and even working independently. There are many benefits of flipped classrooms. I'm sure if you've heard some of the buzzwords of flipped classroom being thrown around in the educational world, you've heard some advantages and disadvantages. We have found true advantages here at HMS. Two of the primary advantages we've discovered are that students can follow the lecture material at their own pace. So when students are at home viewing an instructional video, they can pause, they can rewind, they can go back and watch that video as many times as they want, they can go back and watch portions of the video that might help them with their homework, and they can even point out up to the minute parts of an instructional video that were difficult for them to comprehend or that they have questions about. Also then, the next day, the teacher-supported instruction is truly differentiated. The students are able to come into class and tell the teacher through an interactive learning activity what they do and do not understand. That way, the teacher's able to really hone in on what it is that students need to work on. So I'd like to invite two of our flipped classroom experts, Mrs. Turbecki and Mrs. Balinski, forward. Mrs. Turbecki and Mrs. Balinski both teach pre-algebra here at HMS. Some of their pre-algebra students are here in the front row, and they're going to do a demonstration of the flipped classroom for us. As Mrs. McCoy mentioned, to use flipped instruction, we create video tutorials on certain lessons that students can view at home, and then they are able to then use these, watch them, and take notes on the worksheets that we provide.
When the students leave us, we'll give them, instead of the typical worksheet where the students go home, work on the problems, try to solve them at home, where they often struggle and you as parents may not remember middle school math, you struggle with helping them. And we are not there through a phone to reach out to us to say we need help with our homework. The flipped instruction is, the instruction is in class, I'm sorry, the instruction is not in class, the instruction is at home, but we provide a worksheet for them that coincides with our video tutorial. As they're watching the tutorial, they fill in the notes, they're taking their notes at home. And we'll even throw in a couple of practice problems for them to try on their own while they're at home. And then when they come back to us the next day, we're able to try to reinforce some of that material that they had learned at home. So this is an example of a video that they might watch.
This is the video for Lesson 65, similarity and measurement. Now, in the last lesson, we learned how to look at similar figures and find corresponding angles and sides. We also learned that the ratios of the sides in similar figures is equal. And when we have ratios that equal each other, we can set up proportions. That's what we're going to do in this lesson. So in Example 1, we're given that the two quadrilaterals are similar. ABCD is similar to EFGH. And we're going to find the missing side, which in this case is EH. Now, sometimes the question will tell you exactly what side to find. Sometimes, just in the picture, you'll have to look for the variable that's next to one loop size. Okay, so our first step says write proportion involving EH. So if I look at my names, I see that E is first and H is last. So I know that that matches up with AD, because that's first and that's last. So I'm going to start writing my proportion. So I like to start with the first figure. So we're going to say AD, and we're going to put it over EH.
Now, the students would have an exact copy of this version, they would be writing it as they're listening and watching.
Okay, well, that's going to equal another ratio. And then you want to look in your picture and see which corresponding sides have both measurements given. Well, here, we have GF given. If we look, GF would be in the two middle letters, which means BC would be in the two middle letters. And if we look at our other quadrant, we are given BC, so we can use the ratio of these sides here to complete our proportion. Okay, so back here, if I started with ABC.
So when we're working on this at home, again, as I said, we would then throw in, once they viewed the lesson, we would have a couple of review questions for them to try on their own. They're able to pause the video, we can then walk them through, and they can check their answer at home, they can come in the next day, ask us any questions. When they come in the next day, we may run it a little differently, we can break them up into groups, we compare them up, or they can work independently. And one of the strategies that we'll use now incorporating technology, in addition to our YouTube channel, is we use what are called smart remotes. So the students are able to then, we'll pull up a question for them, and we have a couple of our students who are assisting. The students will log in, and with these, they have a couple of options. They are given student IDs, they can log in where I then know who the students are using remotes, or they can log in anonymously. So right now, our students are logged in anonymously for this. We can have a question up, so now our class comes in, they viewed their homework last night, we have a review question, we want them to complete it, they're working on it, they enter their answer in class, which they should be doing now. And we're also able to see to the left how many out of the students have actually answered the question, so right now, one out of seven of them have answered.
Once they finish, we can stop the question and instantly see how many people got the correct answer. And they all got the correct answer, so we would be able to then move on to the next question.
All right, so now, we're able to at that moment instantly get feedback from the class. If they had done homework last night, there's no way as teachers that we're able to go around to every single one of their worksheets, every single one of their problems, and at that moment, check to see how they did. With this, we can throw in a couple of random questions, and we're able to see and get an understanding of how they're doing at that moment, real time, in class. So now we have another question. And with this one, we have some more of a variety of the answers, and we can understand from this that some of them are a little confused. So if it was the first question, I would know that they have a great foundation of it, I wouldn't need to use class time to review that question, because I already know that they're based on and have a great understanding of it. With this question, we may take a couple minutes just for you to clarify any misunderstandings that they may have. And that's how we use flipped instruction.
Thank you so much. Hopefully, this gives you an understanding of some of the technology that's being used in the classrooms here at the middle school. We thank you so much for your attention, we'll turn the meeting back to the Board. With the NJAS starting today at Haslett Middle School, this is the perfect opportunity to announce the following: Students have received a perfect score of 300 on last year's administration of the New Jersey Assessment of Skills and Knowledge. Jake Morales. Timmy Pham. Hannah Premiano. Jenna Rasp. And Christine Villa Vicendio. Congratulations to all the perfect score recipients. We would like to congratulate this year's Haslett Middle School Spelling B winner, Emily And this year's Haslett Middle School Geography B winner, Daniel Dragunoff. The following students were members of the Haslett Middle School academic team that placed fourth out of 30 teams at the Mast Pre-High School Academic Tournament. The following students have had their original works published in the Creative Communications Essay Anthology. Rebecca Ecklin. Derek Ellis. Bethany Evans. Nicole Maduro. Elizabeth Rosales. Robert Snyder. Tyler Strasser. Best staff attendance for the month of March 2014 goes to Beer Street School. Congratulations to all of this evening's recipients.
We'll go into our student member updates this time.
Hi, everyone. I hope everyone enjoyed their refreshing spring break. Few reminders for all parents and students: Third marking period report cards can be seen on the parent portal. First off, Riordan High School's annual talent show will be Wednesday, April 30th, at 7:00 PM. The Junior Prom will be held at the Sterling Gardens on Friday, May 2nd. The Beatlemania Band fundraiser will be held on May 9th. Haslett Middle School's Spring Concert will be held on Wednesday, May 14th. HMS will also have their annual art show on May 14th at 6:00 PM. Beer Street Elementary students will begin NJAS testing May 5th and finish on May 8th. Get into spring spirit by purchasing beautiful flowers at the PTO plant sale on May 8th and 9th. Co-Road Elementary, PTO's council meeting will be held on May 1st at 9:30 AM. Students will begin NJAS testing May 5th and finish on May 9th. The PTO plant sale will be held on May 8th and 9th. Lilian Drive Elementary will have NJ Pass makeups for all second grade students through May 5th to May 7th. Middle Road Elementary will have their NJ Pass testing for all second grade students starting April 28th through April 30th. The 4th grade Spring Concert will be at Riordan High School on May 4th at 7:00 PM. Middle Road will also have, will celebrate National Teacher Appreciation Week starting May 4th. May 8th and May 9th will be the PTO plant sale. Riordan Valley Elementary School, second grade students will have their NJ Pass testing on April 28th through April 30th. Riordan Valley will also host the art show at 6:00 PM on April 30th. Sycamore Drive Early Childhood Learning Center will celebrate Teachers' Day on May 6th. The PTO will have their meeting on May 7th at 7:30 PM. May 9th will be the PTO plant sale. May 12th, students will celebrate Garden Day. Thank you.
Now, we have a short budget presentation, and following that, we will have a vote and then a little break.
Thank you, Mr. Willey, and we will try to keep it brief. As this is our budget hearing, it's important for us to share with the community and with all of our stakeholders information that went into creation of this budget, so we'll try to be concise and hit on the highlights and give you a synopsis of the overview of the budget that will be presented for the 2014-2015 school year. Okay, where do we begin? I thought that was a cute picture and reminded me myself when I was at it. But nonetheless, where do we begin with the budget and where do we start?
Can you guys hear me by walking here? Tell me no if you can't. I'd rather just walk and talk, is that okay? Can you hear me back?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Where do we start? When we begin our budget, we start with one thing in mind, and it's our students. And we begin with our mission statement, which we created a number of years ago, and we're in a moment near and dear to our hearts, and we believe what we said. Our mission is to educate all of our students to achieve their maximum potential. That's where we start planning with the budget. You know, we don't make cars, we don't make air conditioners, we don't sell stuff for Walmart. What we do is to provide an education for the students and the families and the children in this community. And we take it really seriously that we provide a quality product so that our students can be successful, not just locally or in state or nationally, but globally, because that's the competition that our students face in the world in which we live. So we start the budgeting process, making sure that we, as the Board of Education and the Central Office of Administration, are able to provide adequate resources for our students to meet that mission and be successful. That's where we begin the process. What does it look like? We start at the building level with a building level administration, so listen to feedback from their community, from their staff members, and guess what do they need? What do they need to achieve our mission? What do we need to improve our programs and continue to move forward? After that, they meet with the Central Office of Administrative Team, myself, Mr. Malamine, the Business Administrator, Dr. Roman, our Assistant Superintendent, and we discuss their ideas and the feasibility, how they relate to our mission, whether we can actually put those in practice and have the funds in order to do that. We next bring it to our Board of Education Finance Committee. A member of the Board, four members of the Board of Education comprise our Finance Committee, and we talk about it. We talk about what our initiatives are. Do we have the allocation of the resources to make those initiatives happen? We have discussions back and forth. From there, we bring it to the full Board of Education, we then seek the county approval, and then we come here. This is our public hearing where we share our thoughts on the steps to the budget, what we want to implement and install for 2014-2015 school year. Three basic budgets, I'm sorry, three basic objectives to the budget. We want to make sure it's a multi-year approach, that we're not using every year coming up with a budget to meet this year's needs and then moving on next year, coming up with a budget to meet those needs. It's a multi-year approach. We were fortunate enough a few years ago to have our Middle States Evaluation Process, and last year, developed our seven-year strategic plan. We use that to guide our growth as we move forward. We have academic goals contained in that plan, as well as organizational tasking goals, which we all listen on our website. That's our seven-year plan moving forward. So we want to make sure this year's budget, meaning 2014, builds on those goals and will continue to provide the foundation as we move forward. The next objective that we want to do is make sure our resources are allocated in an appropriate manner, and make sure that the allocation of those resources are related to student achievement. At the end of the day, what we want is student achievement and increases in student achievement. How do we do that? Make sure the initiatives that we put in place are effective. We assess that information, we use data-driven instruction and data-driven decision-making processes to determine which initiatives were successful. Last year, we have, this year, we put in place a online, fully online advanced placement course to high school, and we think it's going pretty well. Kids seem to be responding to it, the teachers enjoying it, and the conversations back and forth are really productive. But in the end, when we evaluate the effectiveness of that program, how well will the students perform in that advanced placement assessment test really matters? If they don't perform as well or better than the students who take a traditional course, then we got to question whether that was really an effective use of those resources, and that's number two. And last, the third thing, it's important for the community to have trust in the Board of Education and administrative teams that were allocating resources successfully, and your trust that we, we know every dollar that you give us in the Board of Education, you need to know is well spent, because you work hard for your money. And in today's day and age, it's even more difficult to earn a living and be successful. We take that responsibility very seriously, and that's our third objective, to make sure you have confidence in us, that we're spending and allocating your resources in an appropriate manner to yield the best products for the money that you put forward. It's really hard to see this, this is our 10-year history, though, we wanted to put it up there, and a couple things are really important. If you look at this number here from 2014-2005 down to 2014-2015, it's 10 years. Over those 10 years, our school budget has averaged a 1.8%, which is less than the 3% that the county deems as fiscal, as fiscal as far as well and appropriate. We're proud of that. We were able to keep the budget low and increases low and simplify its program to the district. If you look at this other line, this is, again, it's hard to see all the information's on the website, but basically, our state aid was $13 million approximately in 2008. For next year, it dips significantly after that, it's still not up to where it was almost six years ago. And the problem with that is, the less money we have in state aid, that means more money has to fall on the shoulders of the taxpayers. And the state aid was reduced from the economy, we were struggling over the years ago, and we've yet to get back to where we were in 2006, 2008, I'm sorry, 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011. And we're still working towards it. Mr. Mal, is that what's on the slide?
No, there's a slide we'll get to in a couple slides up, and what you'll see is the state actually does an adequacy formula and tells us how much they should fund those, which is in excess of $14 million. And yet, us, just like a number of other districts in the state, they're still not even funding their own formula, their own calculation of what they said they should be given to the district. We'll continue to try and fight it, we talked to our legislative legislators, as our funds are tight here, they're tight in the state as well, and we hope that we can maybe not get back to where we need to be for that formula, but get back closer to where we were a few years ago.
You have no comparison, this year's budget with next year's budget, you see the numbers up there. Tax levy is going to go up about $900,000, and really, that's primarily due to the increases that we have to, A, for our health insurance premiums for our employees, as well as the implications for the Affordable Care Act. We have to provide insurance coverage to employees who prior didn't have insurance, and that comes after almost nearly a entire $900,000 increase in the tax levy that we have there. The overall budget, as you can see, the general fund, it's stamped $100,000. So these are just comparisons, we showed you a 10-year comparison, these are comparisons from year to year. And the state aid's, okay, the state aid's about to sink, it's up about $60,000. If you see the graphic for the state aid, it's pretty clear that it's gone down, it has not yet, and this year's, next year's projected budget got to the point of where it was here in 2009, 2010. You want to talk about this?
This covers what I was speaking about briefly earlier. The figures haven't come out for this year, the state didn't release them, they were actually sued, and they have to release them this week, they didn't release them today. Hopefully, they will be out tomorrow to tell us what our projected aid should have been for this year. So this slide is exactly the same slide that we had in last year's presentation to where the shortfall was. Since our aid only went up by $20 per student, that's where that $60,000 number came from, they gave us $10 per student to meet the costs associated to go with the park testing that we've made a test this year, and we'll fully implement the next year, and another $10 per student for other costs, which obviously doesn't cover the increase in cost for these students. So while our prorated aid is going to be much lower than it should be, our projected aid, or the aid that the state says we should use, will nobody end of the week, unfortunately, we don't know that number for this evening. Tax levy, the board has been very good. Three years ago, and two years ago, there was no tax increase. The board's allowed to put out a tax, as Dr. Reagan talked about, to raise property taxes by 2%. It doesn't mean the overall budget can go up by 2%, but the actual tax levy. When you don't raise the tax levy, you're allowed to bank it and use it for upcoming and future years. Some of those monies that the board has banked will actually be expiring as of the adoption of this budget. There's $481,000 in taxes the board did not raise that it never can raise again. After tonight, there's $804,000 that can be used in future budgets if necessary. Tonight's budget does utilize, and then you'll see on the resolution, $60,000 of bank cap to meet some of those Affordable Care Act numbers that we had to hit. But we're actually $1.2 million lower in taxes raised than what the Department of Education says that the district board could have raised based on that 2% number.
This is something we're really proud of. The School Development Authority, SDA grants are available, and this Board of Education has always taken a proactive stance when we come to facilities. Rather than letting facilities degrade over time, and they come into the public and say, "Listen, we need a referendum because this building's falling down, falling down. We have an attendant to its needs." The board annually budgets a certain amount of money to renovate classrooms, to improve structures, to fix roofs, to fix landscaping, to fix the grounds, to fix the infrastructure, the facades of the buildings and things, so that the buildings are an appealing learning place and they are structurally sound for our students. So we typically do that on an annual basis. We're fortunate that the School Development Authority put forth these grants that as soon as they come out and we apply for them. And what that means is a lot of these projects that we were scheduling to do, you know, the Riordan High School boiler replacement, that boiler is as old as the building. Anyone that has a home knows that heating units don't last forever. You know, when you try to manage the heat in a building with 90 classrooms, it's hard enough to deal with an efficient system, but one that's inefficient is equally more difficult. So that was a scheduled renovation that we had. With the SDA grant that we rewarded, they pay 40% of the cost. In each of these grants, we will get 40% from the state. Sorry about that. Lilian Drive roof repair, the gym replacement at Riordan High School, the Middle Road structural repairs underneath the building has to be shored up for the foundation. The media center, we've tried to do elementary media centers on an annual basis to update those. You know, the library, if you went to his children, they no longer are sufficient to meet our students' educational needs. We now have media centers that incorporate technology and have different things in them, different learning spaces for our students. These grants, all here total $1.3 million, which equates to 40% of these initiatives. We're really proud that we got those grants from the state. A total of $2.3 million is what those grants have been.
There's four phases to the grants. The district's been awarded grants in every one of the phases. So our grant total after these awards will be to $2.3 million. That should complete the awards that were set aside from the bonds that we issued from the state. If there are some monies available and another round comes out, the board's ready with some more projects and they'll move forward and go with the... This grant was for, let's say, the Middle Road Media Center. We know that the Beer Street Media Center is one that we're budgeting for through the following year. So if that was to come up, that'd be another grant we'd apply for and go for the following year.
Okay, first and foremost in the budget, all the current educational programs and initiatives remain intact. You know, the things that we've worked hard over the years to put in place, the Commitment to Technology, the Full Day Kindergarten, the After-School Tutoring for the students that need it. Those things all remain intact, the initiatives we did doing enrollment programs and things like that. That's the first thing that's really important. Nothing's getting cut or nothing's being reduced. All the initiatives we had in place will remain intact. Okay, so what's new in this budget? There's a number of key things that are new. We have expanded advanced placement and technology course offerings at the high school. You know, our goal with our Go Enrollment and Advanced Placement courses is for students, when they graduate Riordan High School, to have the capacity and the ability to have a year of college under their belt. We're not there yet, but we're continually working to get there. And offering the advanced, more advanced placement courses that students can take at a younger grade level allows them more opportunities to do that. And that's a goal we continually want to move forward for. It's appropriate for our students, and it's also fiscally responsible for our parents, because if you take those courses while you're in high school, it's significantly cheaper than you would take them when they get to college. The new ADDY program, we're really proud of that. That's a program geared toward students that typically were not on a college track of performance. And they may be the first children in their family to go to college. And what it does, it provides them the skills that they need in order to be successful academically, starting in the middle grade, middle school, moving on to high school, and learning those skills, and raising the expectations that, yes, those students are going to go to college. We're really happy about that program. Again, we will gaze that effectiveness as we do over time, to see how successful that program is. Increased course offerings in high school and the middle school. We're going to offer more courses. We're proposing a couple of different schedules to adjust the schedules, and so negotiate exactly what those are going to look like. But they will afford our students more opportunities to take a wider variety of courses. We're excited about that. You know, the students that are going to be successful in tomorrow's world are going to have a wealth of experiences, be they in the arts, be they in humanities, as well as the STEM, the science, the knowledge, education, engineering, management-type skills. That's important. The creativity part is equally important. New textbooks, the advanced placement courses we're offering. Algebra, we talked about today in the flip class, and using the pre-algebra in 7th grade. Next year, all 8th graders will take algebra. That's part of our initiative to have a higher expectation bar for our students. And some people have reservations this year that students were struggling with the pre-algebra in 7th grade. Students were performing beautifully. Some students are doing better than others. That's human nature. And we're providing the support for the students that need it, and we're providing enrichment for those that are functioning at a higher level. But our expectation is that all students can succeed at that, and they are. And that will move into the 8th grade as well, that all students will take algebra, so they're enabled to have the higher level math courses when they get to high school. Expanded summer enrichment, you know, the summer enrichment program we started probably six years ago, and it gets better each year. We have more course offerings, and this year, we're continuing to expand on those, offer more advanced placement courses. So the students that have taken advanced placement at the high school in September, will get a jumpstart in the summer and be able to get a head start in their studies. Other districts are doing this too. It gives our students one step forward in moving in that direction. We're also offering an online blended kind of course for 8th grade students going to 9th grade for geometry. And again, these are for students that want to do this. I got high school kids, they don't want to take school in the summer, but sometimes we have to force them. And those that want to do it and want to get to that next level, there's an opportunity there. We'll assess how many students actually go on that course, and we'll see how successful it is. Implementation of the Middle States District-wide accreditation. We're really proud of the district-wide accreditation that we achieved last year. We use that forum to create our strategic plan moving forward. Now that we have the strategic plan, it could be nice and pretty, and we could put it on a box and say, "There it is, it looks nice," or on the website, but we're really bringing it to life. We meet on it regularly. We have action teams for each of the four goals, and as we move forward with the implementation, things are changing. You know, and the goals may need to be adjusted, and things in the action plan may need to be tweaked, to make sure we are being true to that, and we will continue to do that. We want to implement that seven-year plan. Midway through, we're going to report out how successful we're being, and then we may need to adjust the entire plan as we move forward. Technology enhancements, Mr. Mullins?
Yes, the district's invested well over $1 million in the last few years in technology, including, as I'm sure the students know, an increased bandwidth, allowing more videos to be shown in class and more devices to be used. We have a number of new apps that are going to come out next year, and we load onto our smart board and onto our iPads. Smart boards are already in all of our pre-K through 6 classrooms. General Ed, they're going to be going into more of the resource rooms and some of our support classrooms, like the art rooms. Chromebooks, we brought in a number of Chromebooks right before our park testing this year. It worked very, very well. We have budget for bringing on more Chromebooks next year, which will be used for testing, but also it's something that can be in the hands of the students on a daily basis. And in some classes, like some of our higher-level science classes, the Chromebooks can't handle the programs, so we have some budget for some laptops to be able to bring into some of our physics classes and other classes. About six years ago, we instituted a TV studio in the high school that shows the daily announcements every morning. We're going to be upgrading the distribution system for that TV studio. As we go to a different schedule over at the high school, it allows more time during that first period. It will allow the students to build a bigger and better product, and they'll be able to distribute that out throughout the entire school and also through our website. And then also, something that's already here in the middle school, the Elmo document cameras became very popular here in the middle school, and there's a number of schools that budget to have those increased and put those tools into students' hands on a daily basis. Facility improvements, as Dr. Reagan touched on, and as you can see, there was a stage here before break. We continue to make changes and make improvements. The HVAC system is on the agenda for approval tonight at the high school, where we're getting the 40% funding. The technology infrastructure, not only are the new Apple computers going to be in that TV studio classroom, but the actual software and the distribution after the school will be upgraded as well. We spoke about the media center at Middle Road. There's a picture there of the one from Riordan Valley from two years ago. I think Cove Road will argue that theirs was even nicer than we did this past summer, and I'm sure that Middle Road's going to try and up Cove Roads. That we were able to put things in, that room was able to have three instructional areas where there's computers, there's desks for reading, as well as places where iPads can come out, and then another area where a TV and different video production can be shown. The window replacements at Riordan Valley, all the windows over at Riordan Valley are going to be replaced. We're putting a bid out for that right now, and again, 40% funding is coming back for those. On an annual basis, interior doors, we're also going to be redoing the doors here at the middle schools very shortly. And rather than having it happen in one big number, each year, we try and do some interior doors, some exterior doors. We try and do some bathroom innovations. We did bathroom renovations, and then also just over break or before break, Middle Road Schools, we renovated the bathrooms right by the gymnasium there. It's something where we try and hit one or two each year and not wait until they're all at disrepair. And the same thing with the classroom renovations. There's classrooms that each year we try and bring up. We did two of the science classrooms in this school over the summer, and then the third science classroom at the school we'll do next summer. So anyone with a 7th grader will have another updated science room for your students to be in next year. So every year, we try and do a little bit so it doesn't fall to be one big number at the end.
In the end, we're very grateful for the Board of Education and their continued commitment to do what we feel is the best initiative for students, and provide the resources and tools that we need to help us enable our students to be successful for the world most of the time we graduate. Be successful, be it academic, vocational, or the military, whatever they, career path they choose when they exit our schools. And this budget is just one of a number that supports that initiative's continued movement forward. And again, we're grateful for the support of the community. I appreciate your attention to this. I would encourage you, when you have time, to go on the website. We have not just this information, but all the information we talked about, about our initiatives and about the Middle States accreditation, and this particular PowerPoint will be up there along with our user-friendly budget. I encourage you to take a look at it. And any questions or concerns you have, if you don't ask them tonight, feel free to direct it to my office or Mr. Mullins' office. And again, we appreciate all your support. Anyone have any questions, concerns?
I remember the board will come back and help to quote on the budget. We'll continue to have you right after that. Thank you, Dr. Reagan and Mr. Mullins. At this point, we're on the agenda, page 1. Assistant comments, anyone who'd like to address before regarding items that are on the budget agenda, come to the podium and state your names, and please comment the statements may be made, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic at all, as others who speak on that topic have been heard. All right, seeing done, we have a motion on the budget resolution, item 3, 4, I have 3 and 4 pages, 1 through 3. Any motion, Mr. Colvis? A second, Mr. Herman, thank you. Any comments or questions? The hearing now has a vote, please.
Mrs. Gafflin?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
And Mr. Willey?
Yes. Okay, now we're just going to take a short adjournment and then resume with the regular business portion after a couple of minutes. Thank you.